The City Council meeting of the city of Tulare and welcome you all here this evening. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance by Tricia Whitfield and our invocation will be given by Susan Hennard from the River Valley Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and choose a republic for which is stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Stand up everybody if you're going to do the invocation.
Thanks Dennis, our councilman Maderas. Please join me in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and for our city government and leaders, the opportunity to serve the people of Tulare. Help this council and city leaders to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help this council to speak with clarity and restraint. And give our city council and leaders a spirit of service. Remind us all that we are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders our city needs. Help everyone to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all people, no matter who they are, with the reverence that your creation deserves. And finally, Father God, renew our city council and city leaders with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy that we all live in. We ask this in your sons. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pastor, could I ask you just to stay there for a moment?
Sure.
You've been such a wonderful support to the city council by attending the meetings and being so willing to pray for us. And I just wanted to take a special moment to thank you for that.
Thank you. You know, I love this city and I love what you guys do. Thank you very much.
Oh, you might turn around.
Oh. Jeez.
So for those of you that aren't aware, Susan is the chaplain for, one of our chaplains for the fire department. She is always around helping out, doing all kinds of stuff, or a lot of behind the scenes comes in and talk to everybody and make sure that we're okay. Recently, the fire department has changed their class A uniforms. Our business uniform is one step up from this. If you come to the flood drive on nine eleven, you'll see a lot of our folks in it. But there was one person we didn't get. So Susan, the union got together and we bought you a class A uniform on behalf of the.
Oh wow.
So. So.
Hi.
Look at that. Here is your class A uniform. So in the fire department, these, the ranks are down on the sleeves and Susan is the first one in the department to get the chaplain cross.
Oh, it's so beautiful.
Complete with a hat. She gets her own hat. And there are shoes in the bag as well.
Oh my gosh.
We just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you guys. I am shocked. I am, I am shocked. I mean, I don't even, I'm normally not speechless. Thank you guys.
Yeah, we know that.
Oh my gosh.
We have a dressing room back here if you want to go try it out.
No, that, it takes me a while. And so this is, oops, my pants fell off. Oh, they fell off the hanger. This is so special. I am so honored, you guys. You have no idea. You know I love you guys to death. And I just want to cry. Can we get a picture? Can I get a picture with everybody? Shawna, can we take a picture? Thank you. Oh, I love you. Eric just said, I'm the department mama.
Oh my gosh.
Come on, dude.
We had dinner.
We're, we're above.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I love you guys so much.
Thank you. You guys all lied to me while you were here.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Oh, sorry. I'm so rattled now. Can't think. That was quite an honor and I love our fire department. I said, if I had to quit everything I ever did, I would not give up what I do for our fire department. They're, they're like family to me. So thank you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service. We have two proclamations to give out this evening, so I'd like Noah Whitaker to come and join me up at the dais. September is recognized as National Suicide Prevention Month, a time when millions of people around the world join their voices to raise awareness of suicide prevention, treatment, and recovery. And whereas this is a time that is dedicated to bringing visibility to the role everyone in the community can play in preventing suicide and to encourage all community members to know the signs, find the words, and reach out to someone they are concerned about. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of ten and thirty-four. And more than forty-eight thousand people dying of suicide annually in the United States. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire community. And whereas no single suicide prevention effort will be sufficient or appropriate for all populations or communities, all citizens are asked to join together and take a stand to prevent suicide. And whereas the Tulare County Suicide Prevention Task Force is a multidisciplinary collaborative combining representatives from government, education, community-based service providers, and community members providing training, activities, and education throughout Tulare County to increase awareness of the signs and symptoms of suicide risk as well as prevention and early intervention and best practices. Whereas September tenth is World Suicide Prevention Day, which has been recognized internationally and is supported by the World Health Organization. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Tulare, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty twenty-four as Suicide Prevention Month in the city of Tulare and encourage all citizens of Tulare to learn more about suicide prevention and awareness dated this third day of September twenty twenty-four, signed by the city council. So I'd like to present this proclamation to Noah Whitaker, who in the past has been the director.
Formerly, yes.
Formerly director of the Tulare County Suicide Prevention Task Force and now is the director of the Tulare County Homeless Task Force. And I'd like to present this to him and see if he would say a few words.
I tend to get emotional despite the fact that I've been doing this a long time and I'm very proud of that emotion. So if I tear up, you know, just give me a second to enjoy that moment because that pain is very special to me. This year marks a very important milestone. Oh, I love these moments. Is this, this marks twenty-five years since I lost my father to suicide. I have five children myself and this is something that is very, very near and dear to my heart. My father lost his father to suicide. My kids aren't going to lose their dad. I guarantee you. Car accident, something else, but it won't be this way. Why? Because we train folks in recognizing signs and symptoms of risk. We have support groups that are available in our community. We have a team that's called the Lost Team that stands for local outreach to suicide survivors. I've proudly served on that team for more than a decade now. And this year alone, I've responded to first responder deaths, community member deaths, and others right here in this city. And it's good to know that although these tragedies take place, we have access to things like grief and bereavement counseling with highly trained clinicians. This simply isn't available in other areas. It's due to support generated by families like Mayor Sayer and her family that run an annual fundraiser that helps to provide access to that grief and bereavement counseling. Our Lost Team functions solely on volunteers such as myself that we become trained to go to incident scenes or follow up in the aftermath to give support to those who are bereaved by this form of death. I think one of the most important messages that I could share from this dais is one, deep abiding gratitude to the city of Tulare for bringing light to this issue which frequently sits in darkness. And two, to the volumes of volunteers that are out there in our community, whether actively serving or just now learning about these efforts and will be future leaders. It's my hope that one day our work will be completely unnecessary because we can say in our community, there were no suicide deaths. Unfortunately, that day hasn't come. Following the pandemic, suicide deaths have increased not only nationally or statewide, but right here in our own community. We're losing far too many people when there are resources that are available. And when a death occurs, we have support groups that are available. The person who runs our current peer support group, Mary Beth Tippet, lost her son Jace Tippet to suicide nine years ago. In that moment, when we responded to her, she didn't think there could be a tomorrow. Now she's been leading our survivor support group for well over a year. And she, although still deeply bereaved by Jace's loss, has used that as an opportunity to reach out to other survivors and embrace them. If you're a survivor, I encourage you to reach out to our efforts. Darcy Massey is our current director of our task force efforts and will gladly connect you to support and resources, whatever they may be. Whether you're looking for support yourself or you're looking to volunteer, we would love you to become one of us and help us and help our community. This Thursday evening at Colleges Sequoias, suicide attempt survivor Kevin Hines, who's globally renowned as a speaker. He survived a jump from the Golden Gate Bridge and he's used that opportunity to help others who are in a place of struggle. So Thursday evening at Colleges of the Sequoias, if you just Google Kevin Hines COS, you'll be able to see like a QR code where you can register for that free event and hear him speak. Also, just look forward to other opportunities. We have a monthly task force meeting that you can participate in, in person or online. And we're always looking for ways to incorporate additional volunteers to help be a part of a better tomorrow. So thank you again to the city of Tulare and thank you to those of you in the audience or listening at home, as this proclamation really does help bring light to a very dark subject. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, I am proud this evening to do a presentation today. Here in our council chambers over the last weeks, months, years that I have served on the council, we've had the opportunity to acknowledge and congratulate a number of folks who have represented our city in various capacities. We've had an Olympian who's been here, who's shared with us his medal and shared with us his experience in the Olympics. We've had football, baseball, basketball champions that have represented our city. A couple of council meetings ago, we had a couple of Cal Ripken teams that the mayor brought forward to celebrate with. So tonight I wanted to recognize a group of individual young ladies who have done the same thing in representing our city of Tulare very, very honorably with a lot of effort, a lot of work that they've done. And so today what I wanted to do is invite the Fast and Fearless team, if they can all come up here and, and join me along with their coaches and team moms. Come on, guys. You guys can line up right here. I also wanted to note that we are also joined by our school board member Connie Diaz, who I'm also going to ask to come up to join me in handing out the certificates. But if you guys can line up here, just don't be shy. There you go. So tonight, the Fast and Fearless is one of Tulare's travel teams that works, well, not works out, well, they do work out, but they have practiced year round and participated in a number of tournaments throughout the summer, spring, and into the fall, where they have competed with a number of folks throughout the Central Valley, up and down the Central Valley. And so today I wanted to recognize them for their latest championship win. They won recently, a couple of weeks ago here in Arroyo in Tulare. So I will do is ask Ms. Diaz if she can help me with handing out these certificates and we're going to provide this. But let me read it first and so you guys can have an opportunity. So this is certificate of recognition that is on behalf of the citizens of Tulare. We are pleased to present this certificate to the individuals and I'll name them in a second. But it's in honor of your participation with the Tulare Fast and Fearless Travel Softball Team and your recent championship win in the Tulare Fall Shootout Softball Tournament on August third, fourth here in city of Tulare. Through your hard work and dedication, you placed in the gold bracket and won the tournament championship, beating out the best teams the Central Valley had to offer in the fourteen and underage division. So congratulations and best wishes for continued success. The certificate presented on the third day of September, signed by the mayor and council, vice mayor and council. So I wanted to congratulate you guys for your representation. So, all right, actually you went, perfect timing, Macy, you're the first one. So first, first certificate would be to Macy Hirayama. A picture. And then we have Alea Martinez. Is Alea here? There we go, Alea. Evelyn Urias. Evelyn. And Sofia Diaz. Alea Cardenas. Faith Torres Short. And, oh, you have two of them. And Faith is very, very tall, so it's. Julia, Julia Nevra. Valeria Velasco. Emma Ortega. And then we got Emilia Aguayo. And Aleah Stewart. And Emily McFitrich. Right there, right here. And so I wanted to also take a moment to recognize that a lot of this, their, their, their experiences or wins and their opportunities to play would not be possible without the dedication and commitment of volunteers. Folks who take out of their time to participate in practices, to travel with them and to guide them in terms of not only knowing the game, but with some life skills that they will carry on as they move forward in life. So I wanted to take this opportunity to, to recognize a couple of, recognize all their coaches. So we'll start off with the coach Josh Pena. Josh, can you come on aboard? Yeah, I haven't said a few words. And then I think Buddy, Buddy Hirayama, Coach Buddy Hirayama. And then Coach Jessica Nguyen. You guys can stay up here, Buddy. And then Coach Roy Rivera. And before I ask Coach Pena to say a few words about his team and his players, I also wanted to say that a lot of the logistics, a lot of the planning, a lot of the getting it done would not happen without the team, team managers. And so I wanted to see if I can ask Audrey, who's filming, to come up here, Audrey Hernandez. And I don't, is Jeanette here? Oh, Jeanette Hirayama? Where's Jeanette? Why don't you guys come up here? You guys are the core of the team. Without, without the team managers, a lot of, a lot of things wouldn't get done and we know that, right? And the scores wouldn't be kept. That's right. That's right. So I'd like to ask Coach Penya, if you'd like to say a few words about your team and what you guys are working on, put you on the spot there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm being put on the spot. So this probably be the only time that I may be a little speechless. The girls know I like to talk, so do the other coaches and the parents, right? I just want to thank you for this opportunity. This is, this is a really big. Celebration of our championship and it's been a long while. I've, I've been with this group of people. Helping me and coaching and you know, it's, it's always our goal to of course, win a championship. And we finally did it. Hopefully it's not our last, but these girls have worked really hard and I, I commend them for their dedication. And I, I didn't tell them exactly what they were going to be doing here to tonight. I just told them that they were going to be honored. And this is a huge honor and I hope they know what this means. For, for us to be here tonight honoring them. Thank you to the mayor. I, I've never met you, so. Thank you to Jose, who also has a daughter on the team. I think she's right here. So I appreciate his dedication as well. Sophie has been with me for a while and a lot, and so is a lot of these other girls, sometimes first time, some of them first timers, but. I appreciate them and thank you coaches, my managers, thank you Connie, who's, I'm sure you know Jose's wife. But thank you all. I appreciate this very much.
And then just last, last but not least, I also wanted to thank all the parents. I've gotten to know you guys. The ones who get up early in the morning to be in Modesto at six AM or Bakersfield at seven to the tournaments. I also wanted to acknowledge and grandma there who's always there helping motivate. Motivate the students. So thank you to all the parents as well. So thank you and best of luck as you guys move forward in your future tournaments.
And we'll, we'll take some time now for you to take pictures. So we'll take about a five minute break for you to take pictures.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
You can go home. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah.
You can.
If everybody wants to come on up here, some people can stand back here too and they'll take some pictures. Out the help of my, our chief deputy clerk Melissa. So thank you for helping prepare all the certificates and everything. So thank you.
We don't have that much before then. Did you want me to move it up? All right. I'll again call the meeting to order. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar to request an item from this consent calendar be pulled for discussion purposes. Comments related to public hearing and general business items will be heard at the time those items are discussed. In fairness to all who wish to speak, public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by council. Please begin your comments by stating your name and providing your city of residence. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call 559-366-1849. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing. The meeting. All right. So I have one public comment, yellow card, but I believe you'll want to, well, you want to do this at the time that comes up on general business, John. Okay. Did you want to wait until we come to that item on general, that public hearing? Okay. All right then, any members of the group that want to, the, and the, and council that wish to make public comment that didn't turn in a card? Anyone online? Okay, then I will end public comment. Communications, any communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor. City council received a letter from. I understand this individual be Mayor Armando Reyna Magaña from the city of Tacoma and Colima, Mexico. Suggesting and requesting city council's consideration, serving as a twin city. And so you have that letter before you. He articulates a little bit about his community and what he sees perhaps that are, he has or their community has in common with our community and. We've not previously had communication with this community or individual. I don't know of any of the council members have or anyone from the community's staff is just looking ultimately for your direction in terms of how you'd like to just be handled.
In the past, in conjunction with Hacer and Mr. Sagala came in, there was an active search along with the council. From Mexico out of, out of Fresno and efforts were made to identify a sister city. We have a sister city in Australia. A sister city of Anguilla. It's been my belief and I think Mr. Sagala agrees obviously that we should have a sister city from Mexico. And efforts have been made to move that along and between Hacer, which is the Hispanic Alliance for Culture. Education and what's your R stand for? Relations, we'll use that. Anyway, why don't you go ahead?
No, I think, I think I appreciate, I did see this letter and I think I'd like to see maybe in the future meeting when the city manager feels it would fit on the agenda to have a conversation. We have been trying to get a different city in the state of Jalisco, but the, we had a, there's a new Mexican council that came in in Fresno. Plus the Mexican elections kind of disrupted over there. Their elections are a little different than ours where they all get voted into council as a slate. As a party versus individuals. So they kind of suspend business for about five months before the election. They don't really commit to anything because. Unlike here, we have five different individuals, they all come in as a party. And so a new party was elected to represent a lot of municipalities in Mexico. And so there, I guess a changing of the guard might have taken place. So I definitely would be interested in having a conversation, but whenever the mayor and city manager feel it's appropriate to come back, we can agendize and have more of a conversation, but.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, okay. So we will, we will follow through with that and have an agendized item. All right. Any other communication?
No other communication.
Okay. So now I'll take council reports or items of interest, starting with Councilman Harrell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 23rd of last month, I had the opportunity to attend probably the, the best show in town. I really think the mayor needs to take that on the road. It was a, it was a good time, a great report. Everybody really enjoyed it. Then on the 27th, the groundbreaking of the Bain K nine. Dog park, something long awaited for. Something that was really pushed for by Councilman Maderas and I just. Tagged along on the name side of it. So I can't wait to see that, that completed.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Are you, you're referring to the state of the city? Yeah, yeah. So fun event, good energy, great, great to be there and really appreciate the presentations by our mayor and of course the county. I missed the groundbreaking, I missed a few other events, but as well as constituent issues. Work, you know, constituents and, and presenting issues around, you know, race communications, but also too presented to city staff. About duck issues. I think other council members have heard about the invasions of, of the ducks and their messes that they make at Del Lago and a few other places and. I appreciate Mark taking that issue and see what, see what we can do in the future.
So I also attended the state of the city. We had a really good turnout. There's over three hundred people there and I appreciate all the staff and all the members of, of city council that were there as well. There was a lot that went on in our city this week. A lot of ribbon cuttings, a lot of amazing new businesses, the. Groundbreaking for the dog park. I attended the homeless task force meeting, the TCAG meeting. It was really a busy two weeks and also was able to, with the help of Manny. Address some constituents' issues around the skate park and homelessness there as well. And I think was the Casino Royale during this time as well. So Council, Councilman Maderas taught me how to play blackjack. That was a lot of fun. And so it was a good event as well.
I was there and I lost and she won. Melissa won too. So it, they. Normally when you go on a bad streak like I went, you walk away, but we weren't using our real money. So I, I kept losing. I also attended, I want to compliment the mayor on the state of the city address. On the 27th, I also attended the dog park groundbreaking, which the three of us were there and along with the city manager and it was. Quite an occasion. I can't wait to have. The ribbon cutting when it's finally open and we have, you know, I, I indicated some ideas as it relates to the future fundraising for the dog park and memorials that people. To their long gone, but beloved pets, what we could do to have, have gazebos and places to sit and a lot of ideas. I was already looking online for the possibilities. As it relates to that. Fire hydrants. And that's one of, ironically enough, that's one of the things that came up, you know, fire hydrants with chairs around it to sit and memorials. There's a lot of ideas. On the 28th, I attended the International Agro Center Board Meeting. I'm on that and. This morning I was in Fresno. I, I wasn't sure whether I was going to attend the Citizens Advisory Committee. Meeting for the. Southern San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. That's a mouthful, but I'm on that committee. And I came back into town and I said, well, I might as well go, but I really hadn't reviewed the materials very much. And it turned out the chair wasn't there. And everybody looked to me and said, why don't you run the meeting? And I hadn't looked at any of the material. So this was a fun morning. In any event, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sagala.
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, I don't have anything to report, but I would like to suggest that there are folks here for an item. If we could move up item nine point one before the consent calendar, because I, I have one item on the consent calendar. I didn't want to talk about our favorite dashboard on projects, so. Unless we can, we adopt the consent count and then come back to that.
That's what I'd like to do, please.
Okay. Well then, then I would request that item seven point nine. Be set aside on the consent count.
Before we go further, I did miss one thing on, as an item of interest, I wanted to thank Tricia and her staff. For the job that was done in Del Lago on, because several months ago, we had. A woman come and complain about. De La Vina, on De La Vina from Paseo de Lago to Cartmello. That short stretch of road, many who live in that area are familiar with how that was. And I had had people talk to me about the fact that something needed to be done and she brought it to the fore and I want to thank you for getting that done. It turned out great. I've had nothing but compliments about that. So thank you.
Yes. And just to follow up, Ms. Harvey, who came and spoke at the council meeting, sent us a letter thanking us. So it was very much appreciated, but staff did a great job.
And I think that's an indication that everybody should just take note of is that it does. Pay dividends when you come and bring this to our attention and let staff and let the council know about issues that need to be addressed and. She had a success and I want to thank her for having the courage to come in and do that.
Thank you. The consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. So Councilman Sagala's pulled ten point, seven point nine. Is there anyone else that wants to pull an item? Councilman Harrell, anybody? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the rest of the items.
I'll motion to accept the consent calendar with through seven point, seven point, seven point one through seven point eleven with the extraction of seven point nine as already mentioned.
No second there?
All those in favor?
Aye. All right.
Any opposed? And it passes five to zero. So Councilman Sagala, seven point nine.
Well, okay, this one, I think there's one project that I just keep monitoring. It's the. The street signal that we're hoping to put on Prosperian West. So I know that finally we have moved forward in acquiring the land that needs to be. That's needed for the project or the right of way, as they call it. And so I was looking at the timeline and estimated completion of next year. But I think my only concern is we, does that factor in Edison? I know that that was a new thing that came up where the poles had to be moved and we had to pay for them. I just wanted to get an idea where we were on track. Because that's, that's probably one of the biggest next pieces or hurdles to overcome.
That's exactly correct. We reached out to Edison, oh, I want to say a week and a half ago, trying to get the update, the latest, greatest. Update from them on the status of their utility relocations and have not received a response. We'll continue to reach out to them and try to update, but right now that. Date that you're seeing does not reflect any new information from Edison on the timeline for them to complete their relocation.
And I guess what, what I want to do is, is kind of be a little more creative and. I guess the better word I would use is forceful with them in terms of trying to get them to move on. I mean, I, I got elected in 2016. And this project was something we've been pushing since 2017. It's already going to be, I'm going to get, I'm going to be on this council another four years. And that project's not even any closer than it was. Well, it is closer, but in terms of getting it done. And so I think I just wanted to see if there's any way, and I would defer to the city manager who may be a little more diplomatic, and I know he's worked with Edison on a number of things. To see how we can get this thing rolling, how we get their, their end. I think we have the funds, right? It's the money is not the issue, right? We have the money to pay for it.
Correct. We've already actually paid the fee to Edison for the relocations.
So I, I just would rather, I mean, I, I would hate for it to be a year from now. We're still waiting for that street signal.
The fact that it was brought up tonight in council, it provides an excellent opportunity for me to apply some pressure. To try to get a response out of them. So thank you.
Great. And I think that's the word pressure. Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Persuasion.
Well, use the words, but I want to get it done. I don't want to wait four years.
Yeah. You know, that's really important to both of. Yeah, you know that's really important to both of us, right? Because I have to deal with it every day of my life.
And if there are no other, well, I don't know, if there are no other questions or comments, then I would move Madam Mayor to adopt consent, seven point nine.
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes zero, any opposed? Passes five to zero, so now at this point we'll move up item, I'm looking here for the number. This is general business. Nine point nine point one? Okay, so we'll move that up right now because I want to, we have a lot of people here in council to, to address that. So again, this is comments related again to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council for those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, please mute the device used for viewing the meeting. So this is nine point one, Appeal for Decertification Petition Decision. Josh, I believe that you, is it Josh's?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is related to a petition received by certain members of the, of city staff to decertify the California League of City Employees Association from their representation. The city of Tulare is currently engaged in negotiations with several bargaining units, one of which is Clocia, which is the California League of City Employees Association. These negotiations with these various bargaining units are in a variety of status with Clocia, they began in May and they do remain ongoing. On July eleventh of this year, the California Public Employee Resource Board received a petition from a number of the employees that are represented by Clocia. This petition requested that Clocia be decertified. The Public Employee Public Employee Retirement Board, re, rep, yes, Retirement Board? Relations, Public Employee Relations Board, PRB, we call it PRB, determined that the city of Tulare has rules and regulations that establishes the city's Labor Relations Officer as the determining body for a petition such as this. The petition was subsequently moved forward to the city's Labor Relations Officer, who is our human, uh, human services or human resources director, ooh, having trouble tonight. The Human Resources Director did find that the city does indeed have a series of rules and regulations associated with the decertification process for any particular bargaining group. And specifically section one three zero seven A, which provides a specific time window during the calendar year when petitions for decertification may be considered. The most recent window closed on January thirty first of this year. Thus, the petition that was received by the city to decertify Clocia was not provided in a timely manner or outside of the window for which decertification would be considered, may be considered under these rules. The petition, petitioners have appealed this decision of the Labor Relations Officer to the city council, which is why we're here this evening for consideration. Staff does recommend denial of this appeal due primarily to the lack of consistency with rule thirteen oh seven A, which does provide windows and staff would encourage the petitioners to, if they wish to consider moving forward with a decertification process, to do so at the appropriate time when the next window does open. That does conclude staff's comments on this and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, before I open this to the general public, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just want clarification as to what we're doing, okay? Because I, I know we're ultimately, we're going to have to make a determination and we're sitting in bank as an appeal as part of an appeal process, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
So a, as I see this, I think our sole determination is to determine whether the city's Labor Relation Officer did in fact follow the rules or not follow the rules, as opposed to whether, I mean, I don't view this as a discretionary thing, I think it's a determination as to whether or not we find in, as an appeal body, whether she followed the rules as she was supposed to.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted clarification for that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I open this for the public?
I, I prefer just to listen to public comment online.
Okay, at this time, I'll open this meeting to public comment. Mr. Teresa, is this the time you'd like to step forward?
Hello, my name is John Teresa, I live in Baisalia, I work for City Tulare for the Office of Safety Compliance and Facilities, I'm a community maintenance worker. We're here today in hopes that the council will grant our appeal for decertification for Clocia. I became a member of Clocia because, well, start with my letter. Okay, I've been with the city for five years. When I attended orientation, there was no one present from the union, so I assumed the city was a closed shop and I wasn't where I was part, wasn't part of Clocia. When I found out that I didn't belong to the union, I joined the union. I tried to become more involved with the union, tried to get more information on how it worked, tried to become a, they call it board of directors, because the Office of Safety Compliance Facilities, Parks and Fleet Maintenance do not have a representation on, on the board. When I was fueling my vehicle at the fuel island, I just overheard solid waste discussing how they were unhappy with the representation we were getting from Clocia. As far as contracts, try to find out when anybody really voted on a contract, I can't find anything where somebody actually voted on a contract, so I don't know how these contracts are ratified. I don't know if you guys can talk to Clocia and see if you can get ballots from the last two ratifications, because a lot of people I've talked to have never voted, so I just don't know how they became ratified. Let's basically, let's see what else. I talked to Mike from Clocia and because we couldn't get information from the board, I guess he told me, he spoke to the board and the board decided not to give members any information, so basically for this whole contract, we're kind of like in the dark of what's on the proposals, because they decided not to tell us. So basically that's another reason, we're just looking to find a union that will represent us and kind of understand what the duties of a union are, because I don't, I'm not sure these folks are aware. So that's basically about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address council? Yes. Please state your name and your resident.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Alan. I was, live in the city of Tulare. I started working for the city not like a year ago and I just wanted to go say thank you for this opportunity to listen to us. And overall, I just feel that our union doesn't actually represent us, because like my previous coworker was actually talking about, no, there's a complete lack of communication in terms of what basically just like what steps we're in, what is actually being talked about, how far are the negotiations there are? Because, uh, especially how in terms of our shop stewards, union representatives, we don't have any kind of communication and it just leaves us incredibly frustrated. And at this point, just, I just represent as a part of the wastewater department that just like, we would like to know what exactly is going on. And, yeah, so thank you very much for you guys' time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Council, for your time. My name is Chris Soto, I live here in Tulare. Been with the city with, for eleven years and never had any union members come talk to me. This is not about how Shawna did her job. This, we, we do not want Clocia to represent us anymore. It's our dues, we're paying for a service that all of us here, we're from different departments, we all come together. We, we've really come together for this one issue, even though we all work in different departments, come in at different times. The common denominator is that we don't not want Clocia anymore. I don't know why it's an issue for Josh or our city manager, with all due respect, and we just do not want Clocia. Nobody feels represented, we do not know what's going on. Our, our shop stewards talk to some people, not others. They'll divulge informations to their buddies, not the rest. I've seen them turn down people that are not union members and I have no issue with that, they're not paying the dues, no info, but us that do pay the dues, there's none whatsoever. Mike, I think he's a loose cannon. At our last meeting that was in this very facility, many curse words were said, I think that's unprofessional, but that's the man that we have. And either we do this now or the next time we have a window, we're going to, we're going to keep pushing this forward. The snowball is rolling down the mountain. We would like to do it as soon as possible, but we just want Clocia gone, that's it. We, we feel unrepresented. Nothing to do with how Shawna handled her job, we just do not want Clocia. And like you said, hopefully this, you know, impacts you guys to see how we feel.
Sure.
You know, but thank you guys for your time and.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Soto, if you can come back up to the microphone really quick.
Just, just a second.
So you just made a comment about you're not sure why Josh, Assistant City Manager, the city manager has a concern or problem with this. I don't understand where that comment comes from. Can you elaborate?
Just the, the state, how the, that, how you, well, he said that, uh, he requests, uh, I can't exactly what your exact words were, but you want to deny the appeal. But we're not here to, we're, we're here just, we don't not want Clocia no more, that's it. We're not here to appeal that she did her job correctly or not. That, I think that's what you had understood.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, we understand what it is, at least I understand what it is that you're trying to do, but under your contract, it says that your opportunity to decertify, if I'm correct, will come up in January. Is that correct, under the current contract?
Well, Mr. McDonald, when will be the next time to, to do that?
January.
This January?
Most likely January.
Then you guys will see us here again this January.
Certainly.
Yes.
But, but in labor negotiations, mostly in my career, I've seen them from the distance, I haven't negotiated or been part of them like Mr. Segala. Each side has rules that they follow. And under your circumstance, the contract that you have, that we oversee in effect, your, your time for decertification is coming up in January. Her, her obligation to the city was to follow what the rules were and as the city's Labor Relation Officer make a determination as to when the appropriate time was.
Yes.
Now she has indicated to us that that is not now. That we're right in the middle of negotiations, as a matter of fact.
And we have no issue with Shawna or how she handled her job.
Well, from our standpoint, when we look at the appeal, it's to determine whether she did her job.
Oh, she did do her job.
Okay. Then that's what we have to decide.
Okay.
When you're appealing, we're deciding, did she do her job or did she not? If she didn't do her job, then we grant your appeal. If she did do her job, as I understand it, based on what the city attorney indicated, then we deny your appeal and ask you to come back when the next appropriate time is, which is in January. That's the legal ramifications of what it is we're doing.
No, I, I totally understand that, but, and so that's why I was saying, we're not saying anything against Shawna or, we understand the dates, we never knew the dates, if we wouldn't on the dates, we would have been here at that time. As, as we stated the previous.
Sure.
But, yeah.
But you did say you're concerned about the Assistant City Manager, the city manager. So all the Assistant City Manager doing is giving a report to the determination that Shawna made. And we separated that responsibility so that she's not representing her decision herself, we're having the Assistant City Manager represent it. And I'm sitting here quiet, so I just want to make sure if there's a concern you have about this.
Oh, no, 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 I have no concern with him, it's just.
So I understand.
It's, it's just how he had said, he rejects our appeal, or I can't remember, braid on what he said, but it was something like that.
Well, yeah, and, and in, in his defense, he followed the rules of your contract.
Correct.
And Shawna followed the rules of the contract.
I get that, I get that.
I just wanted to make sure it's really.
I just want to make sure that.
Is a challenge? And if there's a sentiment or some belief that there's something nefarious or some opinion between the Assistant City Manager, City Manager, that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So when you make that comment, I want to make sure, clarify that right here for everyone.
No.
If anyone else has a misunderstanding or another opinion, you should say it, so I could speak about that.
And I, I think I just, I appreciate that and I think, you know, even I have some times figuring out stuff here, so I know that folks that don't do it every day, you know, trying to understand the process, so I, you know, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing what you want to do.
Yes.
You know, staff has a job to do, we have a job to do, so believe me, sometimes I'm trying to.
Shawna, I hope you don't feel we are attacking you. We're, that, okay, we're not, we're not attacking you. We, we just want Clocia gone, that's it. But, yes, we don't understand the legalities and we're just civil servants.
But again.
Yes.
You're, you're, you're more than that.
Well, thank you.
You know, I've said, I've said from the time that I was elected that all of you are the backbone of the city and I firmly believe.
And we just asked them, when we come back again in January, you, I mean, you guys will see the passion that we have for this. We didn't, we do not want this gentleman representing us anymore.
Well, you won't, it won't come before us, when they come back.
Oh, yeah.
Back in January, they'll grant the decertification petition. And then move forward.
They will see you in January, Josh, thank you guys.
If it meets the requirements, that's what Conant would do.
Yeah, she, she'll make a determination that it's timely.
I can wait three months.
Move forward and then you'll have an election and then a determination will be made, is that correct, Josh, as to the procedure?
This is the information that I would have liked to have and thank you for explaining that, I appreciate that.
So I, so just so you know, what I, I, my intention is to ask those questions so that you guys leave here understanding that, so I'll ask the HR Director when it's my time to ask questions to kind of lay that out so you guys understand.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys' time.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mike Cosenza, I am the administrator of Clocia and much of what they said is true. The prior administrator, well, let me start here, the, I'm, I want to clear up some misconceptions. This organization has represented these employees since nineteen eighty-eight. Their representative at the time was Bill Shawhan. He was forced to medically retire in two thousand twenty-two. I had worked behind the scenes with him since about nineteen ninety-seven, then it was with SEIU. So I did do some work for SEIU at the time. I am a retired public employee. For almost thirty years I worked for the city of Hanford. And so I've done much of the duties that these gentlemen are doing. These, you're right, they are the backbone of this city. They, they uphold, they don't get all the glitz and glamour that the police and fire get. They're the guys that are making sure the toilets flush and the water runs and the streets are clean and the trash is picked up. They're the ones that take all of the crap on the telephone calls, they get none of the glory. So I had worked behind the scenes for Clocia since about ninety-seven. I was responsible for the labor law research, preparing correspondence, composing offers, counteroffers, those kinds of things. I was not at the table or involved in any of the disciplinary actions with employees until this most recent contract in, in two thousand twenty-two, when Bill was forced to retire. But during that time I had several conversations with Mr. Shawhan about how these units were handled. His sometimes rude demeanor, employees not having input on contract negotiations, contract votes, those kinds of things. However, he did maintain control of the organization and I said my piece and that's kind of where it was left. When I assumed control in early twenty-three, I met with every board of every unit that was represented by Clocia. I shared with them that moving forward, the members would have a say in their contracts, they would be able to vote for them, they would be able to vote for their shop stewards. None of them were allowed before by Clocia because it was run differently. Every other unit has kind of embraced this new ideology and, and look forward to it. And I'm currently negotiating in every other agency at the same time. I met with the employees, he's right, we met in the. I met with the employees. He's right. We met in, in this very room. Shared those sentiments, answered questions to the best of my ability. I also shared that. The prior administrator conducted business differently. I told them that I don't make any of the decisions. Unlike the prior administrator, I don't make decisions on these contracts. I provide information. I provide energy. I provide expertise. The board of directors makes decisions. There's a board of, on the board and there's a member of the board. They will attest that I make zero decisions when it comes to dealing with these things. They make the decisions. They give me the information to put on offers and counteroffers that best suits them. Now with regard to the proceedings today, I'm still a little bit confused. They're upset. I get, I've heard complaints. I've heard, I still get calls today about things that happened before I was involved. I can't do anything about that. I have made my apologies on behalf of Mr. Shawhan. I can't. I mean, quite honestly, he had a stroke. He doesn't even know where he's at. I mean, I couldn't even go to him for information at this point. It's true. We're past the contract date. Uh, that's due primarily to the compensation study that was commissioned during our last contract. And when things are done correctly, sometimes they take time. Uh, it did take longer than anticipated, but I feel the results are accurate. Clocia and every other union in the city was invited to participate in every step of this study. And we feel we've had ample opportunity to have our side heard and to provide input. Once it was completed, we were immediately invited by the city back to the table. Mr. Mondale provided us with an offer, um, provided by you folks. Um, and we immediately commenced bargaining. Your city staff has been timely with providing information, getting direction from you and providing responses. The city attorney's office, Shauna, Josh have been, they've been over backwards to get to keep this ball rolling. I know that, I know the employees are frustrated. I know they want to get information. They want to get this done as bad as I do. Uh, the other chief complaint that I'm getting from the board is not sharing information on every proposal and counterproposal that's going back and forth. We're simply trying to abide by the rule that the cities put forth on confidentiality. This, this negotiating team, your negotiating team has asked us for confidentiality. We're simply trying to abide by that. The, there's a lot of, um, misunderstanding on the process. The employees don't know the process. I've tried to explain the process. The board of directors has tried to explain the process. They simply, that's not what they want to hear. They want to have every. They want to see every proposal and counterproposal that goes back and forth. And while having information is good. Imagine for a second that Mr. Isherwood, you're due to get a thirty-five percent raise and during the contract negotiations, it becomes something less than at the end. Well. You're going to be upset that you thought you were going to get thirty-five percent and now it's going to be something less. That's why. We don't share every proposal and counterproposal. It's, we get input from the members, which they were all allowed to do this time. They were never allowed to do that before. They all received a survey. They all filled out the survey and the board of directors. Put together the proposal based on that survey information. If nothing else, we're going to follow the rules. I don't care if they're pissed off at me. They can be mad. I'm not going to break the rules because somebody's mad. This board wanted confidentiality. They're going to get confidentiality. If you come, if you tell me right now, you don't care about confidentiality, we'll share everyone back and forth. That's fine with me. I don't, I don't work here. I provide energy for them. I'm doing, I'm working on their behalf. I've also been accused in, in the documents that were provided of meeting with the city manager privately. I can tell you right now, and anybody else is listening, that has never happened. I have never met with Mr. Mondale. Or anybody else privately regarding anything to do with these city negotiations. Um, I have had received calls from Mr. Tristay to meet on several occasions with some of his coworkers. Um, and against our legal team's advice, I agreed to do it. And each of those meetings has been canceled by him. So it's hard for me to get the information out if he's not wanting to meet. I want to be known. I'm not upset with anybody. I have a job to do. I'm, I'm here to do that. I don't harbor any ill will. I can say that I've defended some of the people that have signed this petition. In disciplinary hearings and they've been favorably and they're on their behalf. I'm just trying to correct some past wrongs that the prior administration has done. And lastly, I'll close with, all these individuals are members of Clocia. And it's my job to treat them with the dignity and respect that they all have. They're all hardworking employees of the city. I get that. I've done their job. I've dumped trash. I've worked in the water division. I was acting deputy director of public works when I left. I get what they're doing. It's not an easy job and many times it's thankless. Uh, my goal is to fix these issues, keep the sit, the ship sailing in the right direction. And my request to you, city council, is to follow the rules that are before you. As they're codified and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Pardon me?
Um, I thank you for that, uh, presentation. Uh, for me, I think what I, when I'm interested, um, is, uh, understanding. So that the, the, the workers understand, uh, the process. I think in, in the staff report, it was mentioned in. In terms of the timelines and when data couldn't occur, you know, I think there's no, there's no, um, secret that, uh, I'm a very pro labor person. I, I work for SEIU. I negotiate contracts. I just FYI, reject every single time the ground rules about confidentiality. I, we, we negotiated without them because I, all my members know exactly what we're doing. Um, so I reject those ground rules. It's FYI for the future. Um, and so I think, uh, what I'm interested is allowing them to understand the process. Uh, because I think from what I understood, they went to the state first per the Public Employee Relations Board that handles some of these. But because the city had his own rules, it deferred back to the city. Um, you know, and I, I, just FYI, I would never support a decertification because I think I definitely support. Uh, the members, but having a voice and I would really encourage. You guys to work. I mean, I, I don't, I've never met any of your board of directors. Uh, I've been on this council eight years and never. Met any of them. And so I think that if we could, uh, I would encourage that relationship to continue to have these conversations.
That is absolutely our goal.
If Shauna could, or Joshua, we can explain what the process is because I know we're in the middle of negotiations. Uh, we know it, you know it, and hopefully those will get wrapped up soon. And then there is a process after that. So if you can share with that, Shauna.
Yeah, under our rules for the decertification petition, I wouldn't be able to provide you with a date today. And that's because labor negotiations are ongoing at this time and it is specific into the terms of that labor agreement and when it is made. So I'm happy if the staff wants to reach out to me once, uh, if an agreement is reached with Clocia, we can provide a specific window of time. If you so choose to continue the decertification petition, under the rules, it's in the staff report for thirteen oh seven A. And the reason it's specific about the timeframe, or the reason I can't give you the actual dates right now is because I don't know when that agreement's going to be reached. Or how long the agreement is going to be in effect. And that will determine the timeframe in which somebody can file a decertification petition. Can you come to the dais?
Yeah, if you come up here, I think, I think, uh, appreciate that, Shauna. So I think just you guys understand, it all depends on when the contract's negotiated. When that window i- is open, but I, I would definitely would encourage you guys.
I, I would encourage Mike to get ahold of us and speak to us. I, I will be also talking to my, my coworkers outside. And I would gladly with any of them to have a conversation with Mike. And at least in the meantime, before we continue to decertify him, we can fix some issues that others have, have brought up.
Right. Um, and, and I don't know if there's someone that can help mediate that conversation. I mean, I think for me it would be inappropriate, but and I think it'd be inappropriate for our staff. So there's someone out there maybe that could help out, uh, with those conversations. Um. Cause I think, you know, I, I, as I said, you know, I very strongly believe in union organizing and in, in contracts. And I think. All of you guys being together is very powerful, uh, in terms of making sure that you guys are, are, you know, and I have no doubt that our city does, but you know, other, I've seen other jurisdictions where. It's a little challenging to respect workers and, you know, support them and so forth. And I feel that our council does its best, our staff does its best, but I think. It'd be great if, uh, there would be that communication between you guys.
Yeah, and, and we don't, we don't have time to come to these meetings.
No, I ain't.
But thank you for the, you know, I'm sorry if I came off wrong, but thank you for the timelines, sharing that with us, the info you guys gave us, Shauna, everything. We appreciate that. Light bulb went off.
Just for clarification, Mario, uh, speak to the appropriateness of what, uh, Mr. Sagala talked about. Our staff mediating between the.
Oh, I thi- I think you said it wasn't appropriate for us to do that.
Not appropriate. I missed.
Myself or?
Okay, I misunderstood.
They, hopefully there's, hopefully there might be someone.
Someone in the community or someone that could help at least have those conversations. But I know the priority as, as a labor representative is getting that contract done. So that's, that's.
And you guys. I want you to know that, uh, uh, I'm going to make the motion unless somebody else beats me to it to deny your appeal.
And, and it's totally understandable, totally understandable.
I don't want.
Based on the information that we've gathered.
Want you to mean, in any way, think that that is an indication that we don't appreciate what it is that you do and the manner in which you do it. It's under the rules of the appeal. It points towards whether Shauna did the right.
Yes, yes.
Followed the rules or didn't follow.
Totally clear.
And, and if I could add a quick comment, also folks, um, you may recall when we started moving towards negotiations, when we were getting ready to do the salary survey. I sent an email out to the entire organization advising them of the approach we were going to take this year, which was different than any approach the city's ever taken in the past. But it was consistent with the approach that we took with both the police negotiations and fire negotiations, which was the salary survey. Total compensation salary survey. I spent a little time in that email talking about that and why we were doing it. And then I also invited any of the units that wanted me to come up to talk to them about that, answer questions, present information. I'd be happy to do that. Need to be careful about that a little bit because again, Clocia represents them. But if they had questions for the city manager, I'd be happy to do that, to give them information about the process, the ti- any of those things. There was only one unit that in, in took up my interest.
Yes, we, we spoke to, uh, Fleet. They told us about it and the letter was clear. It was posted on our, we read it. We had no issue. We, we, yeah. So thank you for that.
Yep. And, and, and Fleet was able to ask me some questions that I wasn't, I, I didn't think about addressing in the letter. And so I was able to ask them, but please understand in terms of the process negotiations, I think you understand is. That's a dynamic process. It, it really depends on a lot of variables. I would say, you know. Sometimes if you have smaller units and less complex issues, it could go quicker. If you have bigger units and more complex issues, it could go longer, but. You know, I think both council member Sagala and Mike could say, because they've done many negotiations, it's, it's like a box of chocolates. You just don't know what you're going to get. And, and so this process, I think, is moving. I feel like it's moving nicely. I think we're moving towards a, we're in the sort of the glide path, hopefully. Um, I suspect that most parties will be pleased with the results. Maybe not everyone. Maybe parties will be surprised by the results. Uh, but I would say, uh, I would imagine and we'll see, I would hope that within the next month, we'll be in a much closer position to be able to reveal all the information at that time.
And to touch on that comment you said about meeting with Fleet, uh, they really want to meet you. They have no representation right now. Nobody, you know, talks to them or lets them know. So they wanted to kind of. Meet with you about that. So thank you for going out there. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
I could respond. Thank you, Mr. Sagala for that. Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to meeting with anybody. I'll meet with all the employees anybody wants to meet. Um, I can't divulge the, the intricacies of the contract negotiations, um, but I'll be happy to meet with any of them. The, Mr. Soto brings up a point about their representation. I don't know how they elected or appointed their board before. I wasn't involved in that. Um, however, I have talked to the board now and Steve Garcia, who's the president, and, and in each of my agencies, um, we are going to be putting in. So Clocia has a set of bylaws that govern all of the agencies, city of Selma, Kings County. City of Tillery, Exeter, Corcoran, all of our agencies, right? And as a matter of fact, we're in talks with two other agencies that are interested in joining Clocia. So it's, it, it kind of covers all of them. But inside of that, we're allowed to have, um, for the lack of a better term, kind of operating rules for each. Agency specifically, right? So if the city of Tillery says, hey, we want to have a steward in every department, that's not a Clocia thing. That's a Tillery thing. So if Tillery decides they want to have a steward in every area, that's fine with me. It's, it's not the appropriate time for us to do that because we're in the middle of negotiations. It's kind of the perfect storm of. Everything's happened at once, you know, the prior administrator had a stroke and he did everything wrong, in my opinion. We had several fights about how he conducted himself. And so we have the same issues in Kings County. We have the same issues in Corcoran about how each separate unit operates. It was kind of. One blanket thrown over the whole thing on one horse before. I don't think it should be done that way. Every agency's different. Uh, like you said, Mr. Sagala, every. Contract negotiations are never two the same. And there's not a binder you run to and grab off the shelf that says, if this happens, do this because that's not the way it works. It is dynamic. You know, one minute you may have a half a million dollars on the table and next minute there's four million dollars on the table. It just changes every day. Things come up. Things that may not have been, uh, anticipated happen or hey, you know, this light bulb went off to your point. And so. Again, I'm, I'd be happy to meet with any of the employees that want to meet. I tried setting up some meetings that kind of fell through, but. You know, you're right. I, I mean, the open communication is important in this drug, in this process. Thank you.
So at this point, um, I just want to express my appreciation to all of you. It's been very respectful conversation and I, I feel like there's been some. Uh, understanding and communication that's occurred here that may take you forward in a positive way. Uh, again, I want to, um, um, agree with all of, I know all of us feel. Committed to you because of what you do for our city. And every time my. The person that picks up my trash, I wave at him and I thank him for doing that. And when I flush my toilet, I'm really grateful that that, that works. I mean, there's nothing. That you do that's unimportant to the foundation of the city and we appreciate it so much and we appreciate you. And so thank you for coming tonight and thank you for your respect and willingness to communicate with us and now with, uh. With, with Shauna and with, uh, our, with your representative so that this can be resolved, that, uh, you can meet your needs as well. So I think, I think you feel like you understand things better. I do, after listening to that conversation this evening. Does anyone else have anything else?
No further, uh, public.
Any for, any further public comments before we close public comment? Yes. Can't hear you till you get there.
My name is David Quinones and I work at the wastewater treatment plant. Um. They had mentioned the date of January. Exactly when in January are we going to be able to?
That's what Shauna explained. Shauna, you want to explain that again?
Be like the first business day, the first pay period that ends.
I can't unfortunately provide you right now with an exact date on that because we're still under negotiations and that timeframe is specified under the terms of the contract. So for instance. Say a contract was agreed to for a period of two years, that will shift the time that it would be due. And so once, and if we are able to make a, an agreement, um, some representative, if you guys decide you want to go forward, can reach out to me directly and I can give you the date once an MOU is adopted.
So can we get an email? Like we're getting all this other email from the city or does that gentleman have to get it to us?
Uh, what, what kind of email about what?
Email when the date opens. So we can, you know, instead of being like left in the dark like we usually are, that there's some light.
Management can communicate, management can communicate.
I have a question for you too.
Well, let me answer that question first. Management.
So now what I'm asking is that, um.
Excuse me.
Who's going to communicate to us?
I'll interrupt. You're, you're talking to the city council.
Yes, I understand.
Not, not staff. The city manager asked, asked, indicated that you'd get the date.
Okay.
Please address your questions to the city council.
How are we going to get the date? I mean, like, when, when is it going to?
Are you ready for me to answer your question?
Yes, but I have a question for you too. So go ahead.
Management is making a commitment to provide that information to you via email.
Okay.
When we have the answer, we'll provide it to you.
Okay. And then you mentioned about three disqualifications. What disqualifications are those for, uh? The window to open to, I guess, to decertify the union.
I didn't mention anything about disqualifications.
I thought I heard that. But, um. So there's no disqualifications that will be required for us to put in that request for, um. For the de- expectation, decertification?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
I think, I think what, what I, what I would suggest is once this contract is re, once this contract is negotiating. It comes to, well, it's going to go to the membership for ratification. I would imagine, I mean, that's a process for me. I just, I just finished a contract in Kings County on Thursday. So I've been negotiating that thing for three months. So the way it'll work is once the negotiation is complete by the board and they feel that they, it's acceptable. They'll tentatively agree to it. They'll bring it to membership. You'll have a decision, yes or no. If your membership ratifies and says, yes, we support the contract, then it comes to us as a city council to vote on it as well. Once we vote on it, then that's where Shauna will have. Once we vote on it, then that's where Shawna will have a more clearer picture of when those dates would occur, I mean, for. I, for me, I hope that your contract gets wrapped up in two weeks, but it could be months, I don't know, I mean, that's, I'm not in those negotiations, but I would just suggest. You guys kinda hear out to when you guys will vote, and it comes to us, and then at that point, I think you'll have a better clear picture, so, of when that that'll happen.
So when she provides you, or when we provide you via email, the dates in which you can submit your decertification, those are the windows in which you can do it in. So that means if you don't do it in those windows, you don't get to do it, right, you can do, you'd be in the same situation here now, if you didn't meet those dates that we provide you, those windows. And you submitted it outside of those windows, and then we re, it was rejected, assuming that just like this time, it'd be rejected that time. Then you could come back and appeal to council, and I would assume they would take the same position they're gonna take this evening, so. We will provide you those dates in the email when you can submit the decertification, my suggestion is you meet those dates, if that's what you want to do. Very straightforward and simple.
Okay, but thank you for correcting me, apologize for being rude if I was.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go have an hour commute, so you guys have a nice day.
So Madam Mayor, if there's no other public comment, then I'll move to, um.
Wait a minute, I said I was gonna.
Yeah, I think you already, you already made a motion, didn't you? John, did you wanna say something else?
So, say contract ratifies, and they're looking for a three-year contract, if it was a three-year contract, what would our day be?
So. I would prefer to provide that date, once we have it established, as he had mentioned, uh, once it's been approved, then we'll get you those dates.
I know, I'm just saying, if it was a three-year contract.
Depends on when we get it done, right, so if we got it done this month versus December versus February versus March, there'll there'll be some variation depending on when it gets done.
But what is, like I said, just for an example, so I have a timeframe in my head, say it's ratified next month, a three-year contract, when would the day be open?
Well, I certainly think that we can provide that date to you once it's ratified, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I'll I'll be happy to give you some hypotheticals in an email, how about that?
Yeah, cuz I just wanna know if it would throw it out. Another year, because it's a three-year contract, rather than a two-year contract.
Yep, we we will, we will give you maybe three hypotheticals, depending on when it could be done.
Okay.
And I, but please understand, if, I don't want there to be more miscommunications. If we provide you those dates, we're not telling you those are the dates when the contract is gonna be approved, right, these are hypotheticals.
Yeah, because I know we don't know what the contract length is gonna be, so.
We're not promising, we're just telling you, if it were to be done here, this is when you'd have this window of time, right?
That would depend on the length of the contract, correct?
Correct.
So if we had a three-year contract, it would throw it out later than a two-year contract.
So we'll try to give you a few different ideas, examples, like a two-year contract, a three-year contract, as of this month, we'll try to give you those examples.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I add something real quick that might?
Yes.
So the 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 policy is section thirteen oh seven of the city personnel rules, that's what lays out the timelines. And I believe it's been provided to Mr. Chaste when we rejected the petition, so that's that's in there, the tricky part is that there's kind of two windows there. And figuring that out, as Shawna indicated, really depends on when everything gets settled. So it's not that we don't know, you guys can't read, when that is the possibility of when that could happen, it's just we can't give the definitive answer until it happens. And so you guys could be ready, you guys read the policy, you guys should have the policy, and that that's not the, that's not really the issue, it's really. When does this get all finalized so that we can, and on our end. Well, I mean, we're not, the city staff is really not in the business of getting a potential union, like legal advice. But but we all need to have that conversation and say, okay, if we're gonna let you know, this is what we think the date is. And we're we're just not gonna do that until we actually know, hey, this is, this is our best thought.
And our hope is to have this contract completed shortly.
That's our hope.
Yes.
We have been making steady progress.
Okay. So we have a motion on, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hello again, and uh, just wanna go say thank you for clearing up the air, just overall, just like. This is basically information that we would be, were, excuse me. We're just very happy to actually hear information right now, just so basically, this is very direct, overall. I feel happy that I actually heard what I heard just now, so, again, thank you council members, thank you Clocia, and uh. Thank you, so.
Thank you. So I think we have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Well, let me actually say.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'll I'll make a motion to reject the appeal submitted to city council on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four by members of Clocia. To decertify the union due to timeliness of, to, due to untimeliness of the decertification petition pursuant to the. City of Tulare Merit System Rules and Regulation, as found by our city labor relations officer Shawna O'Neil.
Do I have a second? Did somebody already second it? Oh, okay. I have my hearing needs, and I still didn't hear it, um, so it has been moved and seconded that we, um. Take the action required, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes five to zero, and again, thank you, gentlemen, for attending.
These gentlemen have to go back to work, I, work tomorrow, we should feel free to, uh, thank you.
Now can I go back to the, um. Go back to general business, okay, then we'll we'll proceed back to, um, item eight point one, which is a public hearing. Uh, I believe Gladys, you're the one that's giving this information?
Hi, good evening, my name is Gladys Savitia, housing and grant specialist here with the city. And today I'm here to speak on the proposed twenty twenty-three consolidated annual performance evaluation report. Otherwise known as the CAPR. It's city staff's request that you receive this presentation and hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-three CAPR. As presented. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development sets several regulations and requirements for federal grant programs. Such as the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. The Housing and Grants Division oversees the CDBG grant, which aims to address housing and community development issues. On a yearly basis, housing and grants must submit the annual action plan, which identifies specific project goals and budgets for that program year. As well as submit the CAPR, which summarizes the project outcomes. These projects must align with the adopted five-year consolidated plan. The current consolidated plan goals include public infrastructure improvements, homeless services, and access to affordable housing. In early August, the Housing and Grants Division gathered expenditure and reporting information for the program year twenty twenty-three. Which ended June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. A fifteen-day comment period was announced and initiated on August sixteenth to receive public comments. And is set to conclude after tonight's public hearing. And as previously mentioned, the CAPR reiterates goals and activities established in the annual auction plan. And as well as summarizes their outcomes, the CAPR also includes demographic information of all of the beneficiaries that were assisted with this funding. So the table before you, uh, lists all of the activities undertaken in the program year twenty twenty-three. Um, you'll find their corresponding budgets, expenditures, expect, expected and actual service levels. Uh, you'll see that three out of the five activities either fully expended or came close to, uh, fully expending their allotted budget. Of the five activities, one successfully met its service goal, um, it's important to note that there was some unforeseen challenges. That arose, um, which required a mid-year, um, amendment, including a change in scope of work for the activity. Um, with Kingsview due to a hiring shortfall, as well as the postponement of the public infrastructure. Activity, um, which was moved to the following program year. But despite this, sub recipients, uh, were able to successfully adapt to the scope of work change, and, um. Still deliver an impactful, um, service to the homeless community. Uh, this concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take, um, any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing at this time, is there anyone in chambers or on the phone that wishes to address? Or has questions concerning? Gladys's report? Anyone on the phone? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council members, you have any questions?
So, first of all, thank you, Gladys, I I think I remember the first presentation you made when you first started, and, uh. I just tell you that I know that, uh, it's a lot of work that you do for for this project. Um, I think one of the things that I've brought up in the past, not only during this time, when we talk about the CAPR, but when we talk about CDB in general. Was maybe, um, and this may be a monumental task, but I think it has to start somewhere, um, trying to figure out how they can change the, uh, formula. Uh, for the allotment, uh, you know, according to the chart that you presented, only fourteen, less than fifteen percent, about fourteen percent of money that's offered. CDBG goes to actual social services, a bulk, uh, you know, goes to the administration and to, um. Uh, sort of brick and mortar projects, right, whether it's Apricot and Academy and so forth, and I think in the past I've brought up. Whether the city could write a letter, uh, get it to our lobbyists, get it to Washington, and maybe just throw it out there, and see if anyone else picks up on it, I know. And I'll be going to the League of Cities in October, maybe I'll talk to some of the folks that I know that sit on the steering committee. But I think we need to kind of revisit how the CDBG funds are allowed to be allocated, I think you can only maximum, maximally. Do fifteen percent for homeless and other types of programs. And so, um, I just wanted to note that, maybe if it's appropriate in the future to agendize, but love to be able to have. I don't know if it's in our legislative principles packet, but something that maybe the mayor could sign, say, hey, we'd like for for Congress to consider. Um, changing the formula, maybe doubling it to thirty percent or something, so that we are able to to use more CDBG funds that way. And I know that, uh, some of our streets projects, uh, rely on those CDBG funds. But I also know that they can definitely be used to continue to do the social service part of it, so. So I just wanted to make that note, thank you.
Do you have something? Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanna make a motion, sure, uh, Madam Mayor, Council, there's no other questions or comments, and I'd like to move that, um. We adopt a resolution as presented approving the twenty twenty-three consolidated annual performance evaluation report. CAPR as presented and authorize city manager or his designated submit the CAPR to HUD on behalf of the City of Tulare.
I'll second the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes five to zero. Now we'll move on to nine point two under, um, general business, the Spade Entertainment, and are you giving that report, or Marcus?
Uh, so Brian wasn't able to be with us tonight, so I'll walk you through this quickly, we have Todd Spielman from Spade Entertainment in the audience with us as well this evening. This is a document that Spade Entertainment put together in concert, working with city staff, especially our fire chief and our police chief. It's very similar to documents that he's put together and his other, uh, venues that he's operated in other communities in the past, but. In some cases, more detailed or specialized for this venue and our community. Um, it tries to cover most of the issues that we might deal with, sort of on a, sort of game day issues that come up. Um, I think most of it's fairly self-explanatory. Um, I, I I think Todd would like to talk to you about a little bit, he also has a presentation, very short. PowerPoint presentation, he wanted to give you an update on where things are at with the venue, would you like him to do the presentation first, or would you like to go over this first?
Let's see the presentation.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you so much, let's see if this works. It worked in test mode, right, Melissa? There we go. Um, I just first wanted to share this video with you guys, in case you haven't seen it. So if you go see a movie right now at the local movie theater, it's a Galaxy, you'll see that play before every movie. Um, the last advertisement right before the movie, um, Galaxy came on as a great partner, um, for us. Um, first, I I wanna say thanks to Caliber Construction, they've been great, um. They've always, when I need to do a walkthrough with a potential sponsor or our security team, uh, they've been great about, um. Hosting us and letting us walk through, city staff has been amazing, I work with a lot of city staffs, uh, up in the Sacramento region. And it's been great, all the way around this room, everybody that I've worked with has has been awesome. Even though there are a few things that may not be done for October twenty-sixth, the shows will happen, I just wanna remind council that. Most of the shows that we do up in Sacramento are in a field with no electricity, with no. Structural buildings or anything, we build it from scratch, um, so we're not worried about that, um, in any way, um. The audience won't know a difference if we happen to run the concerts off generators, they're they're not even gonna know the difference. So, marketing, the word's getting out, um, I just wanna show a snapshot of the few, uh. Things that we've been doing and that we're doing right now, September and October are super busy for us, um, we're spending about. Fifty thousand dollars in marketing, um, between now, starting today, um, up until our shows. We're on six radio stations, we have great partnerships, um, throughout Fresno, Visalia. And Bakersfield, all the signals that reach, um, through Tulare and Visalia. Um, heavy social media, we're doing a big digital, um, campaign, we've done a lot of podcast interviews, people have invited us. For podcast interviews, we created a partnership with the Sun Gazette, uh, yeah.
Acronyms, O H H?
Out of Home Media, so that would be, um, digital billboards, or if you're at the gas station filling up. The TV station comes up, advertisements like that. And then Best Version Media, which is a local, um, Tulare magazine that, um, goes out to certain neighborhoods, and we're doing a lot more. So I just wanted to play three quick snippets, one of the things that we love to do is get some of the artists to just talk about. Um, the venue and, you know, that they're excited to, um, come to the venue. This first one here is Kane and Smith. Oh my god, they're all going. Living color, fuck Jerry, it's gonna be a great rock show, so you gotta get out to the rock show, go to spadeentertainment.com. To get your tickets, that's spadeentertainment.com to get your tickets, and we'll see you at the rock show, let's go. Sorry, I'm not very good at this. So, the artists are, you know, really behind this, and this is Martha Davis from The Motels. So those videos, uh, you know, we've just been launching in the community, have received over three hundred thousand views, and, uh. We don't even, we haven't even put them all up yet, so we're just kind of slowly, you know, putting them out there. Um, Adventist Health, uh, the naming rights partner, as we announced at the, uh, city meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, Adventist Health, uh, the naming rights partner, as we announced at the uh city meeting a couple of weeks ago, this was huge. Um, I think getting this done in the first year is really a miracle. Um, when we met with Adventist Health, we did a marketing meeting with them and we asked them what they were looking for. And although I would have loved to have sold the title sponsorship to them, the naming rights made more sense. And so Mark and I worked on that, and we're super happy to have them um a part of that healthcare. I think it's key. They're providing doctors and nurses for every show um to handle that for us. Um, we have plans to do things where they bring their bi- big bus um onsite to do blood drives and different things like that for the shows. So we're we're really happy about that. So business support, um whether it's buying VIP boxes or supporting us through sponsorship, um we're off to a great start. Uh, Token Farms, Adventist Health, Valley Strong Credit Union, Eagle Mountain Casino, Tulare Real Estate Team, ResCom, Salty Walrus Brewing Company, Scenic, Sammy Hagar's Brands, Landalakes, Bra- Braised Kitchen. Um, all have jumped on board to help us out, whether it's Landalakes, I called Karen and said, uh, I don't think our cooler is going to be ready. Do you have a cooler for me to put the beer? And she said, no problem. I'll deliver a truck for every show. So, I mean, they're just really supporting us. And that's a picture of Claudia and I with Sammy Hagar a couple of weeks ago announcing our partnership um with his brand of um tequila and rum, and we have some special drinks um that we're uh doing for him. His last words to us were, what you and the City of Tulare are doing for music is absolutely incredible. And I said, great, lower your fee so we can have you kick off next year. So we'll see what happens. Uh, community support, we have if you just go to our social media and read everything, you can see all the comments and everything. These are just some of them um that we just love to see. I would say that ninety-five percent support from the community and looking forward to it and looking forward to the shows. So we're we're excited about that. We promised you we would go local, so we did that. We had a job for a couple of weeks ago. We've hired twenty people locally so far, with more to come. We have a few positions um to fill. Uh, Rio Productions is going to handle all of our productions. Uh, they are out out of Visalia, but they do a ton of stuff in Tulare as well. Um, we've hired the Good Life Photography to do our concerts, uh pictures and video. Hampton Inn and Suites Artisan Staff Stays. TDES, who run the bars at the Ag Show, are going to run the bars here, which we're very excited about. And Echelon Security, who does security all over the valley, is is going to be our security team. Just want to remind you of the four shows that we have coming up. Um, it's an early year. I just got a bunch of emails on the way down here. Um, today, bands are booking for next year already. So um, so we're starting to lay that out and um we'll report. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Council, do you have any questions of Todd on that before we go to the SOPs?
I don't think so.
Oh, what? Patrick's laughing. That's not good.
No, um, uh, love to talk with you about Sammy Hagar and know him as well. And maybe maybe some tips I can share with you to
Thank you.
nurture him about, I mean, so I saw your photo. I'm like, um, would would love to see Sammy uh stop in Tulare, so.
Cool.
I didn't think he left Cabo.
It's not a big girl right now.
I believe he still got his house in Southern California amongst a few other stops, so.
But you know, Council, one of the things that's really great about all of this branding and marketing and partnerships is a lot of these entities like Sammy Hagar House has national outreach, right? And so he can be involved in somewhere out in the East Coast promoting and talking about this great venue we have in Tulare. And you know, you'd be surprised, like I talked about before, people would be like, we need to go see Sammy Hager when he performs in Tulare, right? So those just opportunities become possible through these partnerships.
Yeah, I I'd like to add, you know, our partnership with Sammy goes deeper than that. Um, we have exclusive access to his PR firm out of LA. That's part of our deal. And uh we have a national press release that's going out next week about this venue that's going to hit every website and every magazine, Rolling Stone Magazine and everything. So this is going to be national. Um, I just did the first draft approval. Today, we made a few changes. Um, but they're huge supporters of ours. So it's a it's a really big deal, and it really puts everybody on the map there.
I did.
All right. So let's talk just a little bit about the SOPs. I I wasn't planning on going in detail. We can, if you'd like. Mostly they, as you read them and look through them, it's it's what happens in this emergency and what happens in that emergency? As you move through the document, move into the back, there's some of the basic rules and regulations that apply to the the patrons who are going to visit the facility. For example, you wouldn't be surprised to see that they'll have a clear bag policy that is becoming very common in all the venues that you go to. You know, because it's an outdoor venue, there'll be some seats provided for VIP seating, but most, the general admission is just you you bring your blanket or you bring a low-profile chair. So, you know, Todd has to cover those things so people don't bring tall chairs and, you know, create problems for other, you know, patrons that are coming in. And then a list of things that are prohibited, you can't bring in weapons. We will, you know, it's an, it'll be a no smoking venue in terms of sitting in the venue space itself. We will provide a smoking area that'll be off to the side back behind the bathroom area. And so folks that want to smoke, they can, but they need to do it over there so that doesn't interfere with those who don't want to have smoke around them enjoying the show. Um, you know, most of the things that Todd will do will be cashless, although there'll be some cash opportunities. Most of the performers like to sell merchandise and they like to be able to have the opportunities to accept cash for merchandise. Um, at the very back of the documents, you know, there's, you know, the standard form of agreement with other, you know, providers, there's the public parking map. I wanted you to make sure you look at that. Uh, because some of you had questions about that. That's the map. We're going to make a couple tweaks to it. Like right now, it says Zumball Park Amphitheater. We need to change that to Adventist Health Amphitheater. And there's another potential parking area that we want to take a quick look at to add perhaps, and then we need to add the QR code. So Todd will add this to his website. When people buy tickets, they also have the ability to hit the QR code and purchase parking passes if that's what they want. There's a number of areas on there, as you'll notice, that are free parking as well. And so, you know, folks will have those those opportunities to either pay for parking or not, and they have a graded scale in terms of if they want to pay for parking. Uh, so we're we're getting closer to to wrapping up the details. The one thing I do want to point out to you, and ultimately we'd love for you to adopt these, you don't have to, and you certainly don't have to do that tonight if you'd like it to bring it back in the future. If there's issues we haven't addressed, or if you prefer not to adopt them, that's fine as well. Our preference is for you to adopt them primarily for this reason. The city hasn't done this type of thing before, and I can tell you that um we need to be prepared for folks that will have a lot of questions and folks that will have a lot of a lot of concerns. Um, when people go to venues, um, sometimes like they go to restaurants, people and this probably won't be a surprise to you, sometimes not everybody's satisfied with every aspect of the experience. Remember, this is an outdoor venue. Some some folks might show up and go, boy, this was warmer outside than I thought it would be. I'd like to have a refund. There may be some shows, folks that show up and say, you know, the guy in front of me kept standing up during the show and I couldn't see, and I want a refund. Um, you'll notice there's a policy in this document that says, anyone who has a complaint goes to Todd first. And if Todd's not able to satisfactorily resolve their complaint, they then can appeal that to the Parks Director. And if that person's not able to satisfactory resolve it, then they go to the city manager, and that's the end of it. We don't have a complaint process, sorry.
At that point, they can go to the Superior Court.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, they don't go back to city council. And so we did that by design, and the reason for that is because um most, most issues are going to be um individual issues, right? It's I have a certain expectation. They're not the issues that have been shared by everybody in the audience. It's going to be an individual or small select group of individuals that just have a different expectation. And those issues really need to be resolved with Todd. And Todd, I've worked with Todd long enough to know he's pretty good at resolving those kinds of issues. Some people might write, might want a refund, you know, Todd has a policy on how he handles refunds, for example. And so I'm hoping to keep as many of those issues outside of council. I think an issue that could come to council, let's say you have an event of thirty-five hundred people and five hundred people have the same complaint. Well, okay, that's probably one that we need to deal with and handle directly with you guys, and we would likely bring that to you. But I'm really hoping that if people call you up directly, that you will refer them back to Todd, or if necessary to me, and then I'll get them to Todd, and that's by design. I think that will help us move as efficiently as possible. Todd, is there anything you wanted to add before we turn it to Council?
Yeah, uh, we have very few, you know, people that want refunds. It's very rare, and Mark's right to the point of I, we did a big festival in July and we had like six thousand people and five people complained it was too hot. And it's like, we're in Sacramento, it's July, and it's like, you know, we did have a hot July, but um uh, a couple of those people called ahead of time and we made arrangements. We gave refunds and said, that's great, you know, we refunded the tickets. They didn't show up. Three of those people came up and stayed, you know, the entire show and complained afterwards. So, but we have a way to deal that, deal with that. We want to make everybody happy. We want, you know, good reviews and everything, so we we'll handle it.
Does anyone have questions?
Why, uh, explain to me why we don't have a no smoking policy period.
Well.
I mean, we've got Adventist Health
Yes.
as the name sponsor. The smoke is, I I know for me personally is a negative if I in any way have to be around people who are smoking, and we're at a point these days where most people expect it.
Yeah, so a a couple of things. One is, um, and Mark and I have had a lot of discussions about this, is we don't see really people smoke at our shows. You know, you're in and out in a couple and a half hour, two and a half hours, and you're good to go. Um, a lot of people vape nowadays, and maybe they take a, you know, a quick vape and then and then they're done. We don't even see it. Um, we watch for that. We have security watch for that because we don't want that in the crowd. Um, our decision to put um a smoking area off to the side behind the bathrooms, away from people, not even affecting people going to the bathrooms, is more of a convenience for those handful of people that do. And then if you take a show like Rad Fest, which is three bands that could be, you know, four and a half hours, if you show up right when gates open, you're going to have a handful of people that want to smoke once or twice, probably.
So it's dealing with the reality of the situation.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the other question I had, maybe, maybe uh both chiefs could could just turn to page thirty-seven, which is the emergency map and the areas of uh exiting, exiting. I think the the problem. Yeah, I I've got it.
Can you pull that up on the screen, Melissa, by chance?
And of course, the emergency that we would be dealing with could be a variety of things from fire, um tornado, as it said in here, and
I try to think of everything.
tidal waves, that kind of stuff. I think it was all covered in here, but uh um, I I think, you know, if you've got an active shooter, I guess that's the one that we all use. Um, I'm a little troubled by the fact that we have no exit on the corners. You know, we have a situation where all these people are sitting up by the stage and suddenly someone enters from the back and in the northwest corner, there's they're almost trapped in that corner without being able to have an exit. It would seem like just as there is in the northeast corner, an exit, there should virtually be an exit on all four corners for people to be able to get out. Is that impractical?
So the amount of exits are per fire and police um of what we have there. So we had them approve that. The the reason for the exit in the upper right-hand corner is basically for artists and staff. Um, we don't want a lot of people going through that exit in case of emergency, because you got to remember we're closing N Street. There's going to be a lot of production vehicles and things like that and equipment. Um, and that's mostly gated off around the amphitheater. So we have security there, so it's a small gate to get through. We want people to go through the masses to the sides and to the to the main exit. I could add one more exit if need be in the lower left-hand corner. That's our VIP entrance. We can make that an exit as well. Um, but that's by design. The other thing is, uh, Tulare Avenue is really busy. And I don't want people jumping out to Tulare Avenue and getting run over by cars or stopping traffic or anything. Uh, so that that was the other point of of that.
There are exits, as Todd just mentioned, at the corners, the southwest and southeast corners by the splash pad in the playground. They're just not identified as the primary. Those more, that's more the VIP.
Yeah, I guess my big concern was that, I mean, if you look at this, you see that big gap there up by where the stage was. And I know Mr. Segala just indicated, I know the anchors there, but there's still, I would think, room to be able to have an exit there. I I don't know.
Councilman, Councilman, I think it would be dependent on the emergency, the direction it was at and where the threat was. Or the other emergency situation where we would exit. I mean, if something happened on N Street, we'd obviously go away from the threat. So it's hard to predict what exact exit we would use. I think we'd find an improvised way, for sure. There's plenty of uh opportunity to escape the threat if necessary.
Will there be a gate to open there i- in an emergency situation?
Not currently, there's not. Not at the current.
I, I, yeah, I mean, in in I'm I I'm just expressing a concern.
Can I add something to that? So after working with Todd, um, the security company, and because of the venue and the size, uh, California Fire Code does require crowd managers. And he's assured that the security company do, does have those individuals certified, and there, that's a specialty in how to manage crowds in emergency situations and direct them out of the exits.
I I had two questions. One was on the security company, and then one was on the smoking issue. Um, just from looking at the map and then actually when the councilman said page thirty-seven, I was looking at it. Um, behind the bathrooms, which is on the, I guess, on the oh, um, east side of that, the, is the splash pad close enough to the to the bathrooms where the smoking area is going to be? I mean, I, if there is going to be a smoking area, I'd rather that it be there. But I do recall from the tour that the splash pad would be in the southeast corner.
The southwest corner.
Excuse me, southwest corner, yes, southwest corner. And I see the bathrooms are just a little trail up there, so if there is, I I don't know, you said behind the bathrooms, so I I'm just curious. I, if there is going to be a smoking place, I would rather not be around the playground area, so uh, if you guys want to keep that in mind.
The challenge.
I prefer none, but.
The challenge is, so the main entrance is off of Kern, the most southern, where you see the southern red entrance dot. Uh, many of the bathroom facilities, the portable bathrooms will have to bring in for the shows, right? Because these, this venue and the bathrooms we have are not designed to support six thousand people. We, it's it's just like a minimum size. If you have pretty good sized event, we're going to have to be bringing in bathrooms. Um, we also have to bring in food trucks, right, for food. Most of that's going to occur on N Street. So most folks are moved, even though they come in the entrance off of Kern, when they're in the venue and they want to get up and they want to go get a drink or food or go to the bathroom, they're going to be using that side entrance off the east side against N Street. So we have a lot of people moving in and out of there. So we didn't want to put the smoking there, okay? We didn't want to put the smoking adjacent to either the playground or the splash pad. And we really didn't want to put the smoking up because remember, you're going to have on the side areas on each side of the bowl, you're going to have people sitting in those grass areas around. So we didn't want to put the smoking up really up against there, and we couldn't put it back behind the stage. We can't have people back there. So really, the only place that was left is pre, you know, you can put it south of the bathrooms in that grass area, which is, which would be closer to the splash pad. But that's where there's going to have braised, which is providing the VIP food service. That's where braised is going to be set up in that grass area right there. So we're starting to run out of areas. We know that, well, we don't know, we suspect based on Todd's experience that we're not going to have a ton of smokers for our shows. So that 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 land, and I'm sorry, the the concrete area that's behind the bathrooms where this, where that exit is right there, we think is probably the best location. We also have to take in consideration prevailing winds. So if we put the smoking area, let's say, up by the anchor and the wind blows against the smoke, it blows it right back into the seating area. Trying to figure out, we could take the position, Council could say, no smoking period. We won't allow any smoking. Our thought was for these first few shows, because remember, these first first shows are like a trial period. We try and see how it works. I suspect we're going to be modifying these SOPs before we go into next year again, and that may be one of the things we decide to change.
Why not east of the gazebo? I mean, that's where
You could, you could do.
that's where the bar's at anyway.
You could do it there. The only problem with that is, as I mentioned before, everyone, including non-smokers that would go to use the bathrooms and the food, because the food trucks are going to be lined up right on N Street on the other side of that grass area. So everyone would be subjected to the smoke if we put it there.
And then also in that grassy area on that side, if we have, which we already do have a couple of vendors, um, that will be selling things, will be lined up there as well. I I think the we just, I think the show that we did a couple of months ago with six, seven thousand people, I think I saw no more than four people smoking at any given time. It's rare, but what it does is it gives them, it gives security an opportunity to say, you can't smoke in the audience, but you can go over here. And so it gives them a location to go. And so it gives them a location to go.
Right, thank you.
We would, our intention is to close Kern NN for the events, yes. Because all the people, when they're lining up to get their tickets, will be lining up on Kern.
Right, because I think the only, well, that was going to be another that question that popped up, but let me give it to the security part of it. So you have Echelon Security that you're going to contract with. And just knowing security companies in general, there's certain limits that these companies can allow. And I understand that part of the agreement, there will be some uniform officers there to to handle a situation. Because there'll be situations where I know the security folks, like that commercial, we're here to observe and get involved, right? So I wanted to see if if there was going to be that coordination, because I mean, we're hoping that thing happens. But if it does occur, I think my understanding is going to be at least four officers in the area or two.
Two, if it if it's a. Bigger event, we'll we'll staff it accordingly. But we plan, we have already have a relationship with Echelon.
Right. And and then the last, well, the last question that popped up during this discussion was. I know that there are a number of businesses on N Street that are, I think, mostly daytime, you know, but the one up in the corner, the. Yeah, that one. I know they're hanging on because I mean, I. Their guys, kids are back in school because it's probably a big part of the business, but I know that they will benefit from these concerts. What what's going to happen to their parking? I know they have about maybe ten, fifteen parking spots. Will people still be able to park there?
Not for the concert. We'll put out signs there for them and we've already, Claudia and I, my wife and I have already talked to every business on that street. And all of them are super excited, by the way, except, let me take that back. We haven't talked to the church yet, but we were not overly concerned with them since it'll be on. Sun, we won't do shows on Sunday typically. But the, so we're going to make it to where they, people can come in and out of that parking lot, the way that we're going to set up the fencing on N. We'll put up signage, no concert parking. All have staff. Parks and Rec will have staff. We'll keep an eye out for that. If we see anyone there that's parking for a concert, you know. We'll we'll have the the right codes on the signage that they can be towed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And by the way, I've eaten there like fifty times. So it's pretty good.
I'm sure they're looking forward to the concerts.
Yeah.
Councilman Harold, any questions?
Nothing other than ready to get it started. Let's do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. No other questions?
So, Council, I, A, I don't know if you want to adopt these or you prefer, you just, or you're comfortable we presenting them to you, to whatever you decide. And you could, we could bring them back if you want to adopt them in future data. Just let me know what your preference is. I'm okay either way. These, but even if you don't adopt them, it is our intention to use these.
What's your preference? Todd, I mean, you, this is a. I I I view this as a rough outline of the procedures that you're going to put together as opposed to a final document.
Yeah, I I think, you know, what Mark said is this could be a a working document. I I think we should adopt them tonight. For one of the reasons is we've hired a lot of staff. And we require of our staff to know our policies. And our intention is to get these policies by the end of the month to all of our staff. And then when we do a walkthrough with staff, you know, we'll have those policies. We keep them on site. We take it really serious. If there's anything that changes in between now and then. Mark and I will communicate that. He can communicate it to you guys. I don't expect anything to really change. The, I I say the only thing that we're kind of going about right now is the bag policy. We went to a show on Sunday that kind of made me like think. You know, they they want clear bags, but they also will allow women to bring in purses that are sixteen by sixteen by fourteen, I think. But that's something that just kind of came to me today, but for right now, I'm comfortable with where we're at.
And you are going to have, that people are going to have to walk through.
Yeah, we won't necessarily have metal detectors. We'll definitely have wands for certain shows next year. I'm not worried about this year. Next year, there are certain shows, we may have the actual metal detectors, but Echelon has the wands. And and they will do that. We'll have a full staff at every single gate. We'll have three to four security, depending on the size of the show. For each gate and then we scale that back once everybody's in and then they float and then they work with police for any.
We're always worried about weapons. I mean, how how do you? Ensure that somebody isn't walking in with one in their.
Everything's a bag check. Everything's like super tight security, as tight as we can get. And, you know, the other thing is, is my staff and Mark's Parks and Rec staff that's going to be monitoring the gates. I mean, that's. You know, we're going to monitor that. I mean, you never know, you know, someone can hop the gate or whatever. So it's real important that we monitor that.
I think on on that point about security, I think the only thing that I would caution and maybe have you consider. Is if you are going to have the security, have it across. The level, don't say, hey, we're having more secure for these types of events for these types of folks. Versus this, because I think that's one thing that I definitely want to caution you on. I would rather err on this, we're going to have that kind of security all the time.
Yeah.
But I I just make sure you don't, oh, hey, we're having this type of music. So now we're going to have. Metal detectors where we had this other music and we didn't. So.
It's more about size.
Yeah, it's more about size.
Well, yeah, but also I think also, you know, there. There's a lot of sensitivity on that from a couple of years ago. So we had a big event here in Tulare. So just, I just caution you on that.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we we do approve. The Adventist Health Amphitheater SOP document and rental agreement with Spade Entertainment.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Opposed? Pass is five to zero.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have one more item, item nine point three. Melissa, are you one of this? Taking care of this?
I'll I'll talk about this one a little bit.
You know, for the sake of time, can I interject?
That would be great.
Okay. I know we had this laid out and had a brief discussion with Melissa earlier today. There were aspects of this and looking at the fine technicalities of. Of the election procedures. And I know the mayor and I went through this two years ago. Actually, the way that happened two years ago, we saved money for the city because. The there wasn't an election and it didn't come, a bill didn't come from the county for having an election itself. In in discussing it with Mark and in discussing it with Melissa. It it was required that we actually have this decision made seventy five days before the election itself. But when Melissa went back and looked at the timeframe, it was virtually impossible. To have that take place without a special meeting itself done just after our last meeting. So as a practical matter, we're now in a position where the safe way, in my opinion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Was the safe way, even though it's unnecessary to a substantial degree, is to go ahead and have all three of you on the ballot. So that no one comes back and says, we didn't comply with the statute as indicated. Is that a fair assessment, Mario?
Yes, I believe so.
I believe so, or it is?
That is my subjective belief.
Okay.
I I would agree with everything that you said, Councilmember Madero, as I. It's an unfortunate circumstance that this is where we're at, but it I think that it is where we're at. And, you know, the reality is, is no other names are going to show up on the ballot. It would be just the three council members. And I mean, suppose somebody could write in a candidate, but. I I don't suspect there's going to be a lot of that.
No, I don't think they can.
Yeah, there's there's other, yeah. So the with the way the Lexiscode works is that there are other write in requirements.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Yeah. Kind of, this is your only choice. You can either vote for him or don't vote.
Yeah, and the danger is if if we say, well, we're we're going to submit it to the elections department anyway. We don't want a situation where someone comes in and says, well, you didn't follow the statute and these people weren't properly elected. And then guess what? We're we're back in a very similar situation we were in two years ago. Except there's three of you. And. You know, in the final analysis, I I think it's better to be safe than sorry. And if you want to be philosophical, the election money we saved two years ago can be applied. To what we're dealing with here today. So. I guess you need to see if there's any public comment and any comment by the other council members, but.
Yeah, does anyone else want to?
Sorry for jumping in on that, Melissa.
Any comment?
As some here know. I've never had an easy election, so tonight it just does not surprise me. And I just look forward to. Thirty days after the election, when everything is finally certified, we'll just go from there.
And I apologize, this is an issue that just came up late today.
All right, if there's no other.
So I guess what would be the action to adopt the option about having us on the ballot? Is that?
No, you would either, you could table it or you could.
It defaults.
Yeah, I mean, you could just table it and do nothing.
Oh, so if we do nothing, it will appear on the ballot.
Yeah, or you could take affirmative action to reject the resolution.
Considering what happened last time, I think we've got to make a real effort with the elections department to not have them unilaterally pull the name off the ballot. They need to be aware that under the circumstances, they have to stay on. And I'm sure Melissa's already addressed that.
I'll be calling them first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, so is everybody's okay with that? Okay.
Should we table it?
Let's just table it, yeah.
I mean, if there's just no action, nothing, nothing happens.
No action taken. Okay. Then moving on, do we have any future agenda items? None? Staff updates? Start with Tricia.
Nothing to report.
Michael?
Nothing tonight.
Mark?
Nothing to report.
Josh?
I will not be with you on the September seventeenth meeting. My wife is turning a very special age on that evening. And I would really appreciate it if you would grant me some grace to not be with you that evening so I can, you know, remain married. So I'll see you in October. Thirty-two, yes.
Tracy?
Nothing tonight.
Mario? Shawna?
Nothing to report.
Chief Art?
Mother Nature's still being unkind to us with the heat. So we will have our cooling centers open tomorrow, Thursday and Friday. And then I think she's going to slow down and let us start cooling off for the fall. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we won't have to open it any further.
Okay.
Don't you want the nine eleven? You kind of mentioned it earlier, but.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're having the nine eleven ceremony during the blood drive at nine eleven at seven o'clock in the morning. And then directly after going to the fair parade.
Chief and Glenn?
We also have our fair inspection on the. Eleventh of September. I hope to see you there if you can make it. I understand there's a conflict with the blood drive, but. We'll walk it out somehow. I hope to see you there.
We'll be there. Mario?
Nothing, thank you.
Mark, anything else? Okay, then gee, I think that means we get to adjourn the meeting. So meeting adjourned at nine fifteen.